Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the business meetings for the City of Prattville this evening. We do have two public hearings that we will go through first, and after that, we'll move into our regular council agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Counselor Sanders.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Counselor Merritt.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett.
Here.
Having a quorum present, I do call this meeting to order. I will read in public hearing item number one. It is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 203 Azalea Drive, 1270 Cooper Avenue, and 105 Thames Drive abated and charge any incurred expenses for this abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone present this evening that wishes to speak in favor of Resolution Number One? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against Resolution Number One? Hearing none, the public hearing on Number One is closed. Item Number Two is also a resolution. This is a public hearing to grant a lounge retail liquor Class II package license for Alabama Enterprise One LLC doing business as Z Spirits. Is there anyone present tonight who wishes to speak in favor of Resolution Number Two? Yes, sir, please come forward. If you will sign in over here at this podium with your name and address, and if you will state your name and address for the city clerk at the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Matt Ellis. This is Dennis Paddy. He's the owner of the property at Alabama Enterprise One LLC. It's on Cosford Road. Y'all may know where it is across from Chick-fil-A next to the Dunkin' Donut. I've talked with Councilman Whaley earlier today, and what we're going to respectfully ask is this be carried over or table tonight. Let us have some more opportunity to discuss. Just a little bit of history. This is, I don't know if you guys know where this property is. He submitted his plans back in September. Plans are approved. He's built it. It's a finished building, but we would, again, respectfully ask to have more opportunity to talk with each one of you guys and put this off to a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. We'll certainly take that into recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone further who wishes to speak in favor of Resolution Number Two? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against Resolution Number Two? Hearing none, we close this public hearing. At this time, we invite you to stand for our pledge of allegiance and our invocation, which will be given by Counselor Stritchett this evening.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all the blessings that it provides, reaching every one of us. Lord, there's so much going on in our world right now, in the Middle East, in Russia, Ukraine, the riots and confusion going on in our large cities throughout our own country. There's so much turmoil. May we find resolutions to love and to respect one another's opinions peacefully, for we are all your children, Lord. May we all learn to live together in peace and harmony one day sooner than later. God, please bless this community. That means so much to everyone on this panel. Watch over us and protect us all, forgive us of our sins, and be with those today who are hurting physically or emotionally for whatever reason. Give them comfort and strength, dear Lord. Bless our city, our state, and our county, and thank you for all of our blessings. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Sanders.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Merritt.
Here.
Counselor Whaley.
Here.
Counselor Stritchett.
Here.
Having a quorum present, I do call our regular meeting to order. Our character trait for the month is tolerance, having an attitude of openness and respect for the differences that exist among people. At this time, we will be looking to approve our minutes from the public hearing and the city council meeting, which were held on June 3, 2025. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, file a like sign. And the minutes are approved. At this time, we will welcome comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda items only. We do have two comment times for those of you who have not visited city council often, and our first comment time is just for items that we will be voting on tonight. We will accept comments. If you would like to comment on that, the second portion towards the end of the meeting, you will be allowed to comment on any item you wish. So if you have a comment for anything we're voting on tonight, we ask that you sign your name and address here on the podium. You will have up to three minutes to address the council.
Oh, I can go ahead and speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But say your name and address first, please.
Oh, I know that, but you know you didn't.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening. Reverend Air White II, 621 West Fourth Street. I'm glad to see that y'all finally put a moratorium on mini warehouses and self-storage, because when you go throughout the city of Prattville in and around, it seems like we got more storages and facilities than we do houses around here. And the other thing about that, I hope y'all put a moratorium on chicken and coffee, too, because I think we got enough chicken and coffee restaurants. I don't know who's over the economic, but, you know, we becoming a laughing stock around here, you know, saying Prattville sure got enough chicken places, chicken and coffee. I mean, if you want to make it simple, just open up one place and you can get chicken and coffee at the same place. So I'm just saying, I just came up here to say, based on this agenda, I'm thankful that we are putting a temporary moratorium on mini warehouses and self-storage, and I hope this gets voted in tonight.
Thank you, Mr. White. Do any counselors have any questions or comments for Mr. White? Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report for us?
Yes, ma'am. If I might ask for a trio of corner privileges?
Yes, sir.
And to start off that, I'd like to ask our EMA Director, David Bagley, to come forward. He has a few comments, and I actually have a proclamation for him as well. Good to see you again.
I brought a couple guests as well.
Okay.
It's all right.
I had the privilege this past week of attending the proclamation hour at the governor's request and see a proclamation signed there addressing amateur operators, amateur radio operators proclamation and awareness week. This is an unsung group of individuals. They are there for us when the world is on fire. I had the privilege many years ago when I was in Texas to be able to see them actually in operations, when we had no other way of communication. This was back before Starlink. This was back when there was, you had two options. You had runners or you had ham radio. And at that point in time, it was an amazing feat to see these guys work and immense help that they gave to us. And so when I came here to Otoga County, one of the things I looked for was that areas and races amateur radio clubs, to be able to build them into our emergency operations program. And I was very lucky to see a robust group here. We have made great strides in this area. In our office, we now have a repeater that helps with touching the other areas, Montgomery and different areas for us locally, but the ability to have them send not just radio messages, but actually documents. When I send a request, I don't have to have just a piece of paper on a fax machine. If the world goes down, I don't have a fax machine. They can actually send that paper for me now to the State Operations Center. And so the capabilities that they have are incredible. It's a huge part of our program now. I look forward to being able to acclimate them into the EOC in a bigger fashion as the time comes. And so I wanted to come with you and ask that we recognize them and their efforts, especially this year, as we're going to have, once again, the field day will be here in Prattville. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Would you like a moment?
Thank you, sir. I just, I appreciate the opportunity. We just, we work for you, and we work for free. We don't charge you anything. The repeater that he was talking about, that was at no cost to the taxpayer. And most of the time, we use all of our own equipment, and by the virtue of, we're amateur radio operators, we cannot, we cannot receive compensation, nor will we take compensation. And I just, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and we appreciate Mr. Bagley. He's a great EMA Director, and want to invite each and every one of you. The field day this year is going to be at the Smith Center out on J Street. It's going to be next weekend, the 28th and the 29th, and everybody's invited out there. It's not just us. It's not just Otoga County. Montgomery County and Elmore County recognize the value of that facility, and Jessica Batrica that runs the place out there has been so gracious to let us use that facility over the years. We lost a few years during COVID, but we're picking it up and running again with it. And we appreciate you, and we appreciate you having us here tonight.
Well, I certainly appreciate it. I do have a proclamation here, and I see you have your camera person here as well, so that'd be great. But in this proclamation, I'll go ahead and read it very quickly, if that's okay. Where the state of Alabama is home to over 13,500 licensed amateur radio operators, many of whom live and work in the city of Prattville, whereas these amateur radio operators have consistently demonstrated their immense value to the citizens of this city through their training, participation exercises, deployment, deploying to the EOC during activations, readiness to provide emergency communication with conventional systems or compromised or unavailable. Whereas these amateur radio operators also provide critical communications and ground-truth reports that are vital to the National Weather Service Field Offices in Birmingham, Huntsville, Calera, Mobile, and Tallahassee, where these dedicated operators maintain reliable communications at the local, state, regional, and national, international levels in preparation of emergencies anywhere on earth. Whereas amateur radio operators regularly practice and refine their communication skills, particularly during the annual American Radio Relay League Field Day exercise, and whereas the annual amateur radio river region Field Day event will be on June 28 through the 29th at the Louise M. Smith Development Center. Therefore, as Mayor of City of Prattville, I do hereby recognize June 23 through June 29, 2025 as Amateur Radio Week. And I certainly do appreciate everything that you guys do for all of us, whether we recognize, you know, realize it or not. Sometimes the logistics and the communication of things is sometimes unappreciated, but most certainly, we do appreciate and recognize.
Thank you, sir. I know you don't remember me. It's been a while, and I've picked on, picked up a few pounds and gotten this beard, but we stood together in the EOC when the tornadoes breezed through, you and me and Larry Green, the father of amateur radio.
Oh, yeah, Larry Green.
Thank you so much, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Larry Green was a longtime city employee.
He was a city employee.
With our planning, not planning, but our building department.
He was a fire, he was an electrical inspector.
Inspector, and he brought a lot of value, and some of his legacy still lives on through that division. So again, thank you. And yes, you and I both have put on a pound or two, but.
Well, no, me more than you, sir. I'm winning in that department.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Well, counselors, you know, has talked a little bit here is about communication, communication, communication. And at this time, I actually would like to invite our Otoga County Board of Education Superintendent Lyman Woodman to come forward and communicate with us tonight.
Hey, good evening. Would it be, I guess, appropriate to bring you up a handout real quick? Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Pass out as many as you want. I'll wait just a second. But first, I want to thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight. Thank you for all you do for our community. I know my time is pretty limited, so I'll get straight into it. I hope that I can point out some ideas for collaboration that not only can help the students and educators of Otoga County schools, but it can also help drive economic development for all of Otoga County. As I've said several times the last few weeks, you know, and over the last few months, I'm very proud of the progress we're making in Otoga County schools. I appreciate the partnership that you guys work with us every day on things that we need to get done. You know, we've had to make some, some very difficult decisions recently, and, but we're, we are doing a little better financially. We, I feel like we're moving in the right direction, feel very good with our academic progress. We're doing a lot of good things, and I hope our people see that. I hope you see that as well. As far as, you know, and I've spoke on this publicly several times, as far as issues that are still out there, we have two major facility issues that we cannot solve by ourselves, which is why I'm here tonight. The two issues are the condition of the buildings that house our students in the city of Prattville and the rapid growth being experienced in Marbury-Pine Level area. Now, obviously, tonight, I'm going to focus more on the city of Prattville side, but over the last few weeks, the same presentation I'm giving you tonight, and thank you, Mayor, for giving me this opportunity to do it tonight, I've also given the same presentation to Otoga County Commission and the Town of Pine Level. So just want you to know that, that, you know, I've been everywhere, and they've received the same document that you have tonight. So the purpose of what's in front of you, the proposal, before I get into that, I need to say this. These are, these are Lyman Woodman's ideas, right? Obviously, we have not had a board meeting. We have not approved anything that's in this document. This is me being here for the last 25 years, 30, actually, no, much more than that. I was trying to give myself credit. I'm now 43, not still in my 20s, but I've been here all my life, and I'm a product of the system. And, you know, I've seen, I've seen it like many of you have. We went through our schools. We've, we've worked here. So everything that I'm giving you tonight, these are, these are ideas that, that I have. Obviously, they have not been board-approved. This is just putting information out there on the heels of our criterion study to see how, how can we partner together to solve some of our needs. So that being said, again, I don't know how much time I got, so I'm going to leave, leave some of it with you. But if you will look in your packet to the second page where it says, Current Financial Status and Limitations, like I was talking about a minute ago, we have stabilized some of our day-to-day operations. I'm very proud of that. Now, there was a lot of hard decisions that's been made, but we've been able to do that. In your packets, you will see a chart there where it says bond cost estimates. That's on the second page. If you'll look at that third portion, and which is why I'm here tonight, okay? This comes from our financial advisor. Basically, for every $25 million we borrow, it costs us 1.6 million in a bond. So I get asked a lot, why don't we have new schools, especially in the city of Prattville? So if you take the estimate of a new high school, that's 150 million, and you can look at that chart, the bond as of today would be 9.8 million. Well, like I said a minute ago, I'm very proud to say that we've gotten to the point where we can have about a $2 million budget surplus, and it's taken a lot of work to get to there. Obviously, 2 and 9.8 is a vast difference. That's why you don't see a lot of new buildings. That's why you haven't over the last several years. It's the same issues my board and, and I have, is the same issues that we've had in our county for a long time. So that being said, again, Mayor, I don't know how much time, so I'm trying to.
You got plenty.
Oh, good. Well, I'll slow down then. See, there you go. All right. So in your packet, you'll see several options here of us working together, okay? If you'll turn to page three, option number one, I call this a full regional partnership. Again, I say this on the heels of saying I've been to the other entities as well, so they've heard the same presentation. In the, in the perfect world, the Otoga County Board of Education works with the city of Prattville, works with the Otoga County Commission, works with the Town of Pine Level. Obviously, the more you work together, you share some of the cost burden. You also honestly can get more of a bond at a lower rate. So obviously, that's what we would like to do if that ever was possible. I've put on here what I think we could contribute. Again, this is not board-approved. This is Lyman Woodman day-to-day looking at our finances. What do I feel like would be a reasonable amount? You see that amount, the Board of Education, 2 million annually. I even put an parentheses there. In 2029, I will be able to, we'll be able to pay off a couple of other bonds that would get our amount up to 4 million. But the way those bonds are structured, I can't, I can't pay them off right now, even though we technically can, but I can't because the way the bond's structured. So in 2029, you'll see that our contribution could be a little more. And I've just got round numbers on here, guys. I'm not, I'm not specifically asking you for these amounts. I'm just showing you to get to that bond payment, what a partnership could look like. So in that first scenario, I've got us at 2, 2 million in the city of Prattville between 8 and 10, the county commission between 1 and 3, and then obviously, Town of Pine Level is a new startup, so I just have pledged a percent of future revenue, however that may look. Option two is a city-centric plan. That's where the Otoga County Board of Education works with the city of Prattville, who also works with the county commission. You see the numbers there. I gave you 150 million dollar bond estimate, because again, that's about what a new Prattville high school will be. That's a 9.8 annual payment. In that scenario, I've got us between 1 and 2 million, the city of Prattville between 7 and 8, county commission between 1 and 2. And again, I know that adds up a little more than the bond payment, but again, I'm just trying to show a range. Option three is a dual-track plan. So in other words, if the city of Prattville and the Otoga County Board of Education work together to solve the Prattville issues with the buildings, the county commission works with us to solve the pine level growth issues, you know, there, there's a plan there where I lay out what that looks like for each entity. So again, I'm not asking for a decision tonight. I would never do that. This is me bringing some, some options to you on how do we, how do we solve these things? As far as, do you see this across the state? The answer is yes. I've talked to our financial advisor quite a bit, who, who heads this up with the State Department. You see financial agreements across governmental agencies quite a bit. It is prevalent in central and north Alabama. So this is, this is something that does occur. On that last page, just a couple of points there, and then I'm sure you got some questions, but you'll see a portion there where I talk about strategic and urgent considerations. Obviously, I've shown you our numbers. We, we can't do anything, I'm telling you, the Otoga County Board of Education cannot build a new school in the city of Prattville until at least 2029. It's probably more like 2032, 2033, based off projections. Well, what we are seeing is a lot of our families, I think our enrollment has stabilized this year. I feel really good about next year, but over the last couple of years, we have seen a decline in enrollment in the city of Prattville. And part of that's caused choices. I understand that. Part of it's because, if you ask our parents, they will tell you, the dual feeder pattern causes problems sometimes. If I've got multiple kids, well, they want to go to Daniel Pratt. And that's what we've seen with our in-district transfer applications. A lot of our parents in Prattville are leaving central zone schools and going to Daniel Pratt because mom works in Montgomery and I can drop off my kids there. It's nothing about the schools. It's just, you know, an ease for them. So I have time sensitivity as one of our issues, because whether I like it or not, the school choice is here, and the longer I wait to solve some of the issues that our parents have with facilities, obviously, the more people we're going to lose. The more students you lose, the more teacher jobs you're losing. The more teacher jobs you're losing, you're having to look at consolidation. And that's, that is the reality of the Choose Act. That is the reality of education right now. That's why it's so important to, to try to solve what your parents are telling you needs to be solved. And I agree, and I think we would all agree, that, you know, what our, what our principals have done in their buildings, you know, I've got a couple out there right now. Mr. Cochran's prime is 100 years old. Ms. Lindsay, it's amazing. You walk in that building, it's mid-60s, and it looks like it was built yesterday, because she takes a lot of pride in her building. So we, we have that issue. You know, as far as why it matters, guys, if we are able to, I'll say, build a new high school, okay? If we're able to do that, that opens up some flexibility in terms of feeder patterns moving forward. But more importantly, we talk a lot about economic development. We talk a lot about getting kids ready for life. And the, the idea that we have is, you know, if we could build a new high school and you could tailor it to what your military families are asking for. This community was built many years ago on the backs of a lot of, all of our families, but especially our military families coming in. What they are asking for is, do you have an international back lure program? Do you have a way of preparing my kid from military? We do. We have a very strong ROTC program, but is there really a school in the state of Alabama that makes that as one of their pillars of, hey, we're going to have a military preparedness wing in this new high school? That's what we would like to do. Focus on that portion. If we're able to build the school, obviously, your, your dual enrollment, your career tech, all that would funnel in through. We have CAC here now. There's a lot of things we could do to work together to heighten that. The, the time is now as far as economic development. If, if we can figure out a way, and I, again, I've said this to every entity, if we can figure out a way to all partner together to make this happen, well, you start to change the dynamics of education in the city and in the county. You know, and there's a part of this as well, and I'll be quiet, because I'm sure you have some questions, but there's a pride factor here as well. I'm taking a lot of pride in this, because this is home, and I'm never going to shy away from that. You know, I'm a product of the system. You are as well. This is our home. I think if we can solve the facility issues with a lot of the things we've been able to do, I feel very good where we're headed. I feel very good on where, where we're going. So I just hit the high notes there. There's a lot more to that packet that you have. You know, but basically, I, again, I said the same thing to the commission and the Town of Pine Level. I'm not asking for a commitment. I'm just asking you to be receptive, and if there's something that we can do moving forward, I'm all ears. I've given you some ideas. There's nothing in stone there. It's just me doing what many of you tasked me to do. I, I was tasked after Ad Valorm fell, excuse me, after Ad Valorm was defeated, I was tasked by all entities, hey, can, can you work on something else? Can you bring us something? So there's been a lot of time and research in with the packets that you have. That's, this is where I'm at. So I will answer any, any question I possibly can. If I don't know, I'll promise you, I'll look into it and go, I don't know, but I'll call you back with the answer. So are there any questions?
Any counselors have any questions or comments for Mr.? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm going to be nice, because I got a lot of questions.
Okay. Mr. Stritchett.
Lyman, I appreciate you.
Are you sure? Wait. Oh, is our time out?
No. You're not on a three-minute clock.
I'm dicking at you.
I think, yeah, your passion for our system is, you know, commendable. And, you know, I think most everybody in this room and our community knows the dire situation that we're in or heading toward. I've said in the past, this is a unique opportunity, partnering with CAC, securing facility sharing staff and faculty, and then the military training. It's, there's, there wouldn't be anything like this in the state of Alabama. It would put a bull's eye on our community. It's like, hey, this is the place to go. No one else is doing this. It'd make a lot of our lives easier. It'd make Amy's life easier. It would, you know, people want to infiltrate our city, and it's going to grow. I think it's incumbent upon this council, and I've said, and I've stepped out before, that we find a way to help our education. Is it going to be easy? Does any of us have the answer? No. You have financial people. We have a great financial person. There's a way for us to come together. And I, and I just have to believe, most of these people sitting in this audience tonight agree that we need to work together as a city, as a county, to help you guys to be as successful as you possibly can, because if you're successful, we're all more successful. And it means so much. We, we help with the military, economic strength. It's, it's just a whole ball of wax. We're pretty much at a crossroad, in my opinion, which way we're going to go. I mean, we're just going to, you know, be whatever we are, or we're going to improve. I know everyone, everyone that I think, except for, maybe Russ is a Troy boy, but we all went through Prattville High School. We're products of the system. You know, my wife is, too, and all three of my children. So it, it means a lot to me. And anything I can do from this seat that I'm currently in to benefit our educational system, I'm all in. So whatever we can find a way to do and work the numbers and pray for a miracle, what do we have to do? But, yeah, I'm, I support it 100% absolutely.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stritchett. I, I do want to clarify real quick, and I appreciate you mentioning CAC. So I need to, I need to go on record and clarify that. There's not an agreement. Now, this is a dream that Mr. Lynn and I have talked a lot about, but the, the reality, the way all that stuff works, until I can solidify the funding side of it, there's, you really will never even get, you know, an agreement to do something. Now, he and I have had many verbal discussions, you know, kind of the things you were talking about. You know, if, if it ever got to the point where we could do something on, on, on that, on his campus, you know, it does open up the door to a lot of different possibilities. But I just want to make sure everybody understands, it's not a, it's not a done deal. It's not a guarantee. I, I can't get to that point until, obviously, I secure the funding, and then you can start having some serious conversations. But CAC's been a great partner with or without this moving forward. I know y'all know that, and I appreciate the investment you guys did get them here, because it's been a game changer for our kids, and it's been a game changer for our faculty and staff.
Other counselors have questions for Mr. Woodman? Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Woodman, do you mind breaking down the per pupil funding for each school in the city, what we're currently receiving right now?
Yeah, I can pull that up. But the reason I'm kind of clamoring on that, I do have some numbers from '23, '24. We actually just got the revised state numbers. What is today? I'm sorry. I've been in a conference. Today's what, Wednesday? I'm sorry, I've been in a conference, today's what, Wednesday, Tuesday? I actually got them yesterday. So, but last year, well, we ranged in the City of Prattville between 8,300 to about 9,400, 9,500. I can get, if you give me a second, I can give you those exact numbers. Now, we spent a little more this past year, obviously, we had more money to spend with the way the state allocated some funding. But when you're talking about the final dollar amount, it takes a while to, obviously, you've got to close out the school year, you've got to wait on the state to approve the information. So in the 23, 24 school year, you're around that 82 to 93, 94 number. And like I said, if you give me a second, I'll pull up the exact numbers. But I can answer anything else still, then. I have them right here. Yes, alright, so Prattville High School was, now this is 23, 24, Prattville High School was 8,700, Prattville Intermediate was 85, Prattville Junior High was 8,000, Prattville Primary, I believe that says 99, Daniel Pratt 97, and PKS 10, 6. The reason you see some variance is federal money and how it's allocated to the elementary schools.
And the reason I ask that, because of course, it's all over social media, you know, the last couple of years, we were talking about, you know, if we're going to give money to, some people are thinking that we're going to give, we need to give you all money, but we also need to give potentially to charter school Ivy money. What are they currently being funded at per pupil? Do you have an idea?
Yeah, well, you know, obviously, I don't, I won't know their exact dollar, I'm not there every day, but, you know, to Ivy's credit, anytime you start a school, you have to kind of front load the cost. Now that they've completed a year, they will earn their ADM and some other allocations for next year. I can tell you, that's public record, anybody can pull that up at any time. My understanding is that number's going to be about 7,700 in ADM. Now, as far as charter schools as well, there's a, the state legislature is layering in ways to fund charter schools, because again, like I was saying earlier, it is, that is where education's moving. Things are changing, whether, you know, whether we like it or not, that is, things are changing. In the last governor's proposal, there was 10.3 million allocated that will be divided among 14 schools. If you add that up, it's about $1,200 per child, so my calculations and others I've talked to, that number, I would assume would be around 9,000. Now, again, our number's going to be a little higher this year, and again, I just got that confirmation yesterday. But as far as what they earn, that's, that would be my best guessment on that.
So potentially, they're already being funded at the current rate that our schools here in the county are being funded?
Based on 23, 24 data.
Based on 20.
Yeah. Now, I would also say, what you see is, again, there's line items in the budget, like for example, the RACE Act. The RACE Act was the legislature's attempt, and it's going to be really good for everybody, for everybody. But there's another allocation in it, I believe it's 2% that goes to charter school students. So the legislature, charter schools traditionally do not have access to local funds. So the legislature is putting in ways to make sure that as schools grow, they also have a way to pay their bills. So that's what they're doing, and they're layering in some help there. You know, that, the charter allocation does not come to us, because obviously, we're not a charter district or charter, well, we are a charter authorized, but we just finished that. But the only way you get access to those funds is if you are a charter school.
So they're getting, they'll be getting funding through the legislatures, because they don't get local funds. Then what if they decide to do the Choose Act?
That's where, it just, I guess, depends on who you ask. My contact at the state, Mr. Jackson, you've got some good questions tonight, because I, the Choose Act is something that we're all trying to make sure that we're maximizing, okay? We are using that philosophy somewhat out of district parents, once it goes statewide where everybody can participate. We would be foolish not to use funds that are there to try to get students into our district when you're going to get the funding from that and the Choose Act. So that amount's up to $7,000. Now, through my, through my searching on how to best use those funds, that we can't really get a whole lot of right now, it was explained to me that because public schools, excuse me, because traditional public schools have districts, the only way we could access that money is an out of district student. A charter, again, according to my research, I'm not saying I'm right, you'd have to ask them, but according to my research, a charter school does not have a district, so there is thoughts that once it goes statewide, that they would be able to access the Choose Act money on top of what they earn from ADM because, or their ADM, because of the way it's figured. So the Choose Act is written to help families find non-traditional public school options.
So basically, if they decide to use the Choose Act money, they'll end up being funded per student at about 16 grand?
Well, if. That's not my world, but.
But based on the numbers you just sent me, so in thinking about it, because of course, there's been discussion about the City of Prattville, not from us, that's just what's out there on social media. Are there any other municipalities that are funding any of the charter schools that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of. Now, the specific charter questions, obviously, I'm not a charter school, so I don't want to, I don't want to be on record saying all that's 100% correct. That's me looking at the Choose Act, trying to use the Choose Act for our system's economic benefit. There's been a lot of questions come to me too, about why aren't we using Choose Act money? We are, it's just not statewide yet, so the whole credit, anyway, I don't want to bore y'all with all that, so.
Yes, sir. And I think, like Robert said, I know going back to 2018, we formed a committee, and we started doing some research into how to better fund and help the school system here. And I know out in that district, we were capital, we were trying to figure out how to capitalize on the funding, and I think back then, there was about four or five million dollars. I don't know, Robert, if you remember those numbers, that were out in that district that were going.
In East Prattville?
In East Prattville, that were going directly to the Elmore County Board of Education. Do you have any idea how much money that's going to the Elmore County Board of Education now?
Yeah, part of the Criterion study, when we were looking at the hybrid model, you know, we were all trying to figure out, how does this work the best? That came out in the Criterion study, was originally, when we were looking at the hybrid model, it was to, do you take, do you incorporate all the City of Prattville and the Tall County Board of Education? Because that was the thought process, you would gain the money in East Prattville. Through that, it's my understanding that there's an agreement with the Elmore County Commission, where they take the sales tax revenue from, I hate to say East Prattville, but the Elmore County portion of Prattville, and they allocate that to the Board of Education. And I do believe that amount was between four and five million.
And I think that was one of the reasons why we were looking at the hybrid.
Yes, sir.
Because we wanted to figure out a way to capture those dollars.
Right, for sure.
So that's what Elmore County is currently, Elmore County Board of Ed is currently receiving from that district now.
Yeah, based on the information from the Criterion study.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm done with it, but that's, okay.
Councilor Whaley?
Thank you. I'll try to be as long. So in, and I know we're not deciding anything tonight, and I know it's not formally before us, but, you know, there's a lot of talk in the community, and I've been asked on several occasions, especially being new to the council and being a candidate for reelection, about city school systems. And my number one response is that in the current climate we're in, residents of the city have had two opportunities to vote for an increase in Ad Valorem, which would benefit the school system. Residents outside the city have had an opportunity once to vote for that, but they have all been defeated. So when asked in this capacity, what do I feel like as far as the city having a city school system? The people have got to prove that they're willing to fund it. We, in my personal opinion as a city, why would we want to take on the issues and challenges that you have now trying to provide education? And knowing that the people have spoken that have said, hey, we don't want to increase. So I agree, there are other funding mechanisms that you have to look for, and property tax is probably not one of the avenues that we're currently looking at.
I'm out of that.
So, you know, so we have other, we have other funding options available. We, you know, we do have a one penny sales tax that was extended, and a portion of that we are now providing for education. So there are, there is a structure there, a funding structure there to assist. So my biggest question is, if we were to decide to venture into a financial partnership with the Board of Education, just to be clear, because I think I know the answer to this, but that money is not utilized for paying teachers and salaries.
No, sir.
It is strictly for the brick and mortar facility, that we would venture into a partnership, and that, those funds would 100% be used for the bond payment for just the facility.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any potential funding agreement, the language obviously is what drives that. I would not come before you guys and ask for help with our day to day operational budget, that's my job to figure it out. And, you know, what I am approaching with all of our governmental partners is to help us solve the facility issue. Anyway, but yes, sir, it would only be, you would only be responsible for what's in that funding agreement. It would not go to anything else, you would have to use it, actually, here you go, here's a prime example. Some of the money that, or the money that you guys give us for the one cent sales tax, you guys, we give you all a report to Mr. Oakley on how we're utilizing those funds, and part of the restrictions on those funds are, I have to use them in the City of Prattville. So it would be set up along those same lines.
That's right, and before you got here, Whaley, what we did was, when we did their portion of the penny tax, we made sure it was incorporated into the police jurisdiction for this reason, and that was before we incorporated the high school into the city limits. So, and how it kind of works is, because I live with this too, like you do every day, basically, the state pays for our teachers and our educational supplies, that's the money they get for per student. Anything else pretty much has to come from local funds. They got a leaky roof, local funds, they would need to paint a building, local funds. So it's very important, you know, I look at, obviously, like a Pike Road, for example, they're 45, you know, they're 45 mils. I mean, wow. So, you know, it's going to take a village to get this done, and, you know, folks need to realize that this money isn't wasted, it's very important, you know, that our facilities are going to need additional funding, and it doesn't come from the state, so.
And I will, real quick, you will see some construction projects very soon, but to point out what Mr. Stritchak was talking about, it's the same world that you guys live in, you will get some money from the state, but it'll be, hey, you have to use it for X, Y, or Z. We, if I knew that the money we're getting from the state right now with our ATF funds and other things, other funds were going to be every year, I probably wouldn't be before you. But the reality is, that stuff is decided each year by the legislature. So to be able to project out a bond, I cannot allocate those funds to that bond. I have to have the local revenue to be able to put the match on the bond. So I know that'll be the next thing, and I've actually been hit up some on that, well, why are y'all doing some things you said would only be done if the tax passed? Well, because we were tasked with finding other ways, and we have found some other ways, but the issue that's before you tonight, I'm telling you, I'm on record, you can take it to the bank, it's not possible with the current financial situation, and that's why you haven't seen, you know, I believe Daniel Pratt was the last school that was built, and if I remember right, that was what, mid-'90s or, so there's a reason that's that way, because once past people before me and boards before us, once you get to the end of the month, you don't have enough to go get a major bond. Now, obviously, I know we just built the kindergarten, I'm talking about outside the kindergarten.
Now, how much of that one penny are you currently receiving right now?
After the cost of the SRO comes out, I believe it's 770, if I remember right, 770,000, give or take a few. Put me on the spot on that one, that was good. I know it's about 12 and a half percent, or 15, or, yeah. So, yeah, half or quarter, 12 and a half percent, there you go. We need to work together more often, that was good.
And I, you know, and I, you know, we've talked, I made a post the other week, I think most people know where I stand, and I just think, I quoted Eminem in the beginning of my post, you know, we have one shot, and what are we going to do? We have a tremendous opportunity right here to work with our Board of Education, we have a potential funding source, you know, we've looked into other municipalities and cities, we're looking at Thompson, and I don't think they have the population that we have, but I know that they've used that one penny to build what they have up there, and I just think it's time. And I, like I said, I appreciate your effort, your board, what you guys have done, that you got, you know, you were willing to step out and make a sacrifice that so many others before you were not willing to do. And I just think that as a council, that we need to take that into consideration and look at what we need to do to help this, because it doesn't just benefit you guys, it benefits this entire community. And like you talk about economic development, workforce development, you know, we're not going to be able to attract companies to the city if we do not have a workforce that's ready, and this opportunity with Mr. Lynn and CAC. So I applaud you, what you're doing, you and your board. So how soon do you need an answer? I'm putting you on the spot. How quickly do you need an answer? Mr. Whitford?
I will defer to the experts at the table who have to make those decisions. You know, obviously, you know, full disclosure, you know, I was asked that at a commission meeting as well. The reality is, if you break ground to tomorrow, you're talking about two to three years from entering the building. So time's of its essence. If it could happen, then we will take it as quickly as possible. And if it don't happen, I appreciate being able to come before you. I think, again, I'll publicly say this, I appreciate working with Mayor Gillespie and you guys every day. You know, I think we've been able to work together on a lot of issues, and regardless of the outcome of this one, that's not going to change how we all have to continue to work together to find solutions. So I do appreciate everybody, and appreciate you guys.
Mr. President? I might have to plug, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I want to piggyback on what Councilman Jackson said. You have a passion, and though the tax didn't pass, you keep finding a way to come up with another idea. And where a lot of folks would just say, all right, with the heck with it then, we'll just go another year and do the best we can, and see what happens. So I appreciate you.
I appreciate that.
And I have a passion for this. I have one question. Like Robert and a few others here, we came to Prattville when our parents were military, and a lot of us have stayed because of the community and the education. Though the times have been tough, do you have like a percentage that, you know, have we lost military families?
In terms of what we've had before?
Yes, sir.
No, sir, I don't have that percentage in front of me. I just know, you know, we're blessed to have two very good military liaisons on our campus, and we talk a lot, you know, what are our military's families saying? Why are they not choosing us? Facilities comes up quite a bit. You know, lack of a better way of saying it, they can go to Pike Road, it's the same distance from Maxwell Air Force Base, they can go to Auburn, it's not very far from Auburn, from Maxwell, from Maxwell to here, you're talking about 10 to 15 more minutes. And, you know, when you're a family moving into an area, whether it's here or wherever, you're going to go by and you're going to visit the schools. I mean, and that's where we're missing the boat a little bit. You know, I wish when people toured facilities, they could see who's in the facilities. You know, you mentioned the passion, the passion is, our teachers and administrators and faculty and staff, they get it done. And, you know, that's what's kept us going for so many years, and that's why, no matter what the answer is, we're going to keep looking, because we owe it to our students and our communities and our employees to find an answer. So I appreciate you saying that, and I don't know the exact percentage, I'll try to track it down. I know it is lower than what it has been, and that's from those conversations.
I appreciate you, Mr. Whitford.
Yes, sir.
And the fact that they're looking at having that addition for that, you got my support.
Right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Have you seen a huge loss in staff? Because I know at Prattville High School, there were some tremendous teachers up there several years ago that have left to go to some of the bigger schools and nicer schools up in North Alabama. And that's just a couple that I know, but have you seen that as a?
Our staff retention rate, as part of our strategic plan, when I came in, you know, the board tasked me with, hey, here's our goals, and retention rate was one of them. It actually has increased over the last year and a half, two years. But look, there's no, there's no two ways around it, you know, and I'll just give this example. When I came in, I never forget, I toured Prattville Primary, and there was, some of you have heard this story, but it's true, went into a classroom, and there were some teachers in there, and I was like, man, that's great, you've got a swimming pool right there, that's cool, have a story. Went into a classroom and there were some teachers in there. I was like, man, that's, that's great. You've got a swimming pool right there. That's cool. Have a story time with your kids. And, and teacher fell out laughing, said, no, sir, that's not why it's there. It's there because the roof leaks and we have to have a way to catch the rain from the roof. So when you're talking about, now, we fixed that. Again, you know, we're using every dime that comes from the state. We're solving as many facility issues as possible. But when you're talking about that compared to, you know, some of the other schools in the districts that we just mentioned, you know, it's hard to hold on to those people. Now, uh, what has kept us going is just like you guys, many of us call this home, and we're going to figure out a way no matter what. You know, now, my concern is when, when our Otoga family educators, ones that went through our system, when they say, you know what, I've had enough, when they walk out the door, this whole thing's coming down. And, you know, that's, that's fact. And that's what we're trying to get ahead of is how do we solve that? Because when we lose them, that's, that's a wrap.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, you can have it back. No, don't go too far, though. Uh, you, you mentioned our county partners. Uh, what was their response, or is there a game plan to come back and visit with them later on?
Yes, sir. What I told them is kind of same thing with you guys, just hash it out, you know, if you come up with something, let me know. I, I will probably reach back to everybody in about a month or two. Hey, is there any appetite whatsoever? I didn't put a timeline because I know, I know what I'm asking is a major commitment. And, and I know, and I'll say this, and I said it at the work session, you know, you guys have the same issue we all do. The, the, the tax base is, is smaller compared to other areas. We all know that. But, you know, so as far as a definitive timeline, no, sir, I haven't, um, you know, but if there's, I'll, I'll take any phone call that comes in. And, uh, I appreciate, again, I do appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. Says a lot about you and the council even having us here. So I appreciate that.
Well, I have to give council a lot of credit there as well. But before you go, um, basically, for the record here, I'm Presbyterian by birth. And with that said, I had, um, as I was getting ready for tonight, I had a lapel pin sitting on my desk. And I don't know why I picked it up, and I thought, put it in my pocket, and I come here, and you don't have a lapel pin on.
No, sir.
So I'd sure like to offer this one to you as a partnership for the city of Prattville.
Most certainly.
You, you actually look so much better now.
Well, I need all the help I can get.
One way you can help us look better, and I don't really ask normally for the council, but I've seen some of these nice lapel pins have a little lion's head on it. I would sure like to be able to wear one of those with honor. Okay, well, thank you. And you can stand here, you can wait, or, you know, sit down. But I'm going to make a few comments about some of your comments as well. Because, um, uh, education is so, so important. And I know we all have stories where we've been impacted by some of our teachers, and there's this one gentleman, and, uh, I forget his name. I believe it was Lyman Woodson. When I was in high school, he impacted me so many different ways. And, uh, so I thank so much of you and your family and because of the education connection there. But, uh, the Lyman Woodson name means a lot to me.
I appreciate it. Those of you don't know, uh, Mayor Gillespie was a pallbearer at my grandfather's funeral, so I appreciate you.
Well, thank you, thank you. And with all that said, councillor, um, you know, this is a very important topic. And it impacts so, so many. And I really didn't have this planned, but, um, I really feel like that we, the city, need to go ahead and do some type of traffic study for the area that has been discussed about. And if y'all would authorize staff and I to, to move forward with that, because I think that is a big component of this project, is to know what the whole global aspect of this is, because it's going to take a lot to get, get us through this. And on another side note, back in 2012 and so, I asked many times for the council for my three Ts, which are the time, the tools, and the talent. And, uh, we need to give them the time, the, the, the tools there are basically going to be the buildings and other fixtures inside of those buildings. But we cannot forget about the talent. It's great to have, going back to the city side of it, it's great to have great big fire truck, brand new police cars, brand new tractors to, and other, uh, instruments to make our daily jobs go about. But if you don't have that human element, and I think that is what has really kept the education program going in Otoga County and Prattville for so many years, is the dedication of like Lyman Woodson, number one, and number two over here. Because it, 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 it takes more than just the building. So I think we have to remember how important our teachers are as well. So with that said, I do have one more point of privilege.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, um, I know what you're talking about, but I don't think a lot of people behind you know what you're talking about. When you talk about traffic study, tell them exactly where you're talking about.
Well, I think, and thank you for that, uh, you know, as mentioned earlier about CAC, uh, I think might be the best unkept secret. But, uh, um, but CAC, which is where the East Memorial Church used to be, uh, on, um, Old Ridge Road. And, uh, and, um, part of that Old Ridge Road is city, and part of Old Ridge Road is county. And that's where that partnership, and we really need to make certain we have all the information to the table. And I believe there's a company called Skipper that does a lot of traffic studies. I think the average traffic study, study is about $20,000 or so. And I think it'd be very pertinent for us to take that out of the education budget bucket, as Daniel Oakley likes to call it. And, um, but if y'all would authorize us to, to do that, I'd like to, to move forward on that just as quickly as possible. And with that further, I'd like to get back into my, uh, like I say, the third point. I asked for a trio of pointed privilege. And, uh, Amy Hillier, if you'll come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councillors. Wanted to just bring up, bring up a couple of things with some opportunities on the agenda tonight. As you know, in economic development, we focus on retail, commercial, and industrial recruitment through strategic growth and partnerships. And so that is our focus for economic development, certainly now and into the future. There are two economic development items on the agenda tonight that I wanted to point out. Item number four, we're adding a new manufacturing business, um, if approved, for the West Industrial Park. They will add a $2 million facility with about 10 employees. That will be a sale of a piece of property that the city of Prattville currently owns. The second one is item number six. Uh, this is Project Mountain. There's been a lot of, a lot of information put out, so I wanted to make sure we're as transparent as possible on these particular projects. This is a competitive expansion project for an existing industry here in our community. Old World Industries has come to us and given us an opportunity to compete between Prattville site, a site in Texas, and a site in Illinois. And they have asked for a 10-year tax abatement. When we talk about abatements, I want to be clear, that is not giving away money. Tax abatements are abating a tax before it comes in. So basically, it will not be there for a short period of time as the company starts up. So this 10-year abatement would allow a, a location of additional property, $26.3 million in an expansion, an additional 24 jobs, which takes that one company on site to 51 jobs for our community, as well as there's a secondary partner there called Graham Packaging. They are not requesting anything, but they would grow as well. So I just want to give as much information as I possibly can and let you know that these are two wonderful economic development opportunities in front of you tonight. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And I'd like to also just piggyback off that a little bit, the, some of the properties, um, that are involved in this, not the West Industrial Park, but some private properties are right now basically pine tree, um, area. Collecting, uh, developing, um, pine straw, which is important, but this, these 24-plus jobs are so much more important than that. And, um, but, uh, again, going back to my report, and thank you, Madam President, again. Good evening, councillors. You know, the good Lord has blessed us with, with, um, so much liquid sunshine lately. It's been just astonishing. And, uh, just mention all this because our parks and, uh, and some of our other facilities, um, where our public works and, and our parks and wrecks have been having to get all out and cut grass, and, and most of it's been bahia grass. Please be very mindful that they're trying to play as much catch-up as they possibly can. But Mother Nature's, uh, has thrown quite a few curves to us all. So if you do see any areas that need to be handled, please put them in a work order. In April, um, the economic development team, our city engineer, city council president, we all had a very successful trip to Washington DC to advocate for funding for various city of Prattville projects. We have, we had very productive meetings with Congressman Palmer's office, Senator Coach Tovol, Senator Britt's office. I'm happy to report, happy to report that Senator Britt has included the city of Prattville's request for funding for McQueen Smith Road in her, um, in her budget. With approval of the president's budget, the city of Prattville received $6 million through ALDOT for funding for the improvements in McQueen Smith Road. And I'd like to thank Senator Britt for including this project in her preparations for continuing to support the city of Prattville. And just wait and see exactly what the other legislators can bring to us as well. I want to continue with good news, and up on the screen, up on the screen, you will see progress on McQueen Smith Road. I think someone might recognize that. Is that District 5? But the picture is showing part of the, uh, install, installment for the traffic light at McQueen Smith Road and Terror Drive. That's one. We're going to have to have a total of four, and that's actually cutting down on some of our initial or overall costs for the widening of McQueen Smith Road. But I think there's a very big first step in, uh, in that area. And, um, this traffic light should be up and running soon if Mother Nature is willing to work with us on that. Councillors, I'd like to say, uh, three other words right here. Parking, parking, parking. Just wanted to pass along that with the current projects we have going on in downtown, the property up on the screen, as you can see there's, the, the city of Prattville will be adding an additional 160 parking spots in downtown. The area that's in question there is right behind our Westbrook Church, which is also a way off Broadway, um, area. And it's a fenced-in area now, and we're going to be working on that, including installing some handrails for some of the steps that are currently there, uh, been there for decades whenever it was a little bit of a mill village. And, uh, so it actually, uh, increased our, uh, parking and increased the, the capabilities of, of our pedestrians walking up and down in that area. So, uh, but, um, that's a, that's 100 parking spots there. We've done some other work around City Hall, um, in that parking lot, but some of our other projects. But the area is located, like I say, it's currently around Spillway Park project. Uh, fence will be coming down. But this will be, I, I think, a big, big difference in the parking in downtown. And, uh, hopefully this will begin in approximately two weeks with one caveat, weather permitting as well. Also, equipment should be on site later this week to start the downtown ADA sidewalk project. They should be starting around the old kindergarten and our foster center first. And that's where we're trying to get all those sidewalks repaired and ADA compliant there as well. Councillors, if you've heard me say before, I've had some good news and I have some bad news. Think we all know that means local paving. Local paving should begin Monday, weather permitting again. We ask everyone to be patient and cautious with crews in the various areas, and the list of this is on our city website. On another note, the challenge of Fairview Avenue, it continues. And councillors, I want to be clear, the lack of progress on the Fairview Avenue widening project is unacceptable. Our city engineer is actively working to get answers and accountability from San Associates and SDAC. We're reviewing every option available to help move this project forward. People of Prattville expect results, and so do I. We'll stay on top of this until the job is done and done right. And any further questions that anybody has, please do not hesitate to contact me. I spent quite a bit of time out there today, some during my lunch hour as I was watching and, um, trying to evaluate the efficiency and effectiveness of the crew on site. And, um, I'll move on to another note. But to, uh, to end on several good notes, have signed the letter to proceed to put North Highland, how, North Highland Park project out to bid. The mandatory pre-bid meeting is June the 26th, and the bid opening is scheduled for July the 8th. I'm looking forward to the progress we have at North Highland Park. The public safety training facility should be complete in, uh, in sometime late June. And I'll keep you posted. And again, some of that is also not necessarily weather-related, but logistically related. They're waiting on some air conditioning to come in, and after it is up and operational, they can bring in that FATs equipment, the firearms, uh, training system that we have for, for first responders. And hopefully they'll, um, that'll move along very, very quickly now. June 10th, June 13th is, uh, just right around the corner. You know, it's going to be Thursday. I'd like to thank our North Highland Community Centers. They're actually helping put on some of those. But I believe there's some other June 13th activities that might be going on. And I believe the, some of the June 13th for the North Highland Community Center is going to be Saturday. But I believe there might be some other activities going on. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Representative Lawrence, myself, and through my organization, the Marlin Marcus Foundation, we are hosting a Family Night concert starting at 4 o'clock on this Thursday. We brought in, um, uh, artists from across the region to come out and give us a good time up here at Matt Gray Park. This is the second year, so hopefully, uh, some of this liquid sunshine will hold off because we've got quite a bit of money invested. But yes, so, uh, please come out. It's going to be a good time. Bring your fans. We're going to have some fans, but, um, I think, what's the song, Boots on the Ground or something like that? So wear your boots and be prepared to do a few line dances with us.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I know, uh, uh, it's the last event there at the, at the fairgrounds. It was very well attended. And the weather, though, was not that bad that year, but who knows about this year as well. Uh, in closing comments, again, Madam President and councillors, um, my tenure here for many, many years, this is the best that I have seen the city of Prattville work with our EMA team. The best I've seen our city of Prattville team work with the 911 team. It's also the best that I've seen the city of Prattville work with the Board of Education. And I truly believe that we have the best intent for all of our citizens here in the city of Prattville. So thank y'all, and, um, end of my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do any councillors have any comments or questions for the mayor this evening? Thank you so much. At this time, we will move into reports on the council's special committees. Councillor Sanders, do you have a report? Councillor Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. The street committee met on June the 4th, 2025, to discuss the lighting, lighting and, uh, the lighting project on Fairview Avenue, and we had a chance to discuss Red Rock Ridge. And we, and we reviewed the CDBG applications.
Councillor Merrick?
No, ma'am.
Councillor Whaley?
No, ma'am.
Councillor Stritchett?
I have one, the finance committee meeting met on the 9th of June, and we discussed the planning department printing fees. And we also had an executive session discussing economic development in the city. At this time, we will have Mr. Oakley come forward and give us a report on the status of the city finances.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the first page in everyone's packet is the general fund revenue report. And it shows that we have received $41,519,85 for the fiscal year to date. And this represents a 2.6% increase over the same period in the prior year. The next page is the tax breakdown comparison, and on the tax side, we were up 3.77% when compared to the previous May. The next three pages are, uh, show the general fund expenses broken down by department. And we are two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year on the expense side and have spent 72.3% of our budgeted expenditures in the general fund. The next page is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. And the wastewater fund generated a net income from operations of $45,653 for the month. Operating expenses and overall expenses are in line with budget, uh, right around 68%. The next page is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. And the sanitation fund reported a net loss of $240,797 for May. This was primarily due to the purchase of a boom truck that was roughly $223,000. Operating expenses are in line with budget, um, and overall expenses are slightly below budget at 65.4%. The next page is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. And the judicial fund generated a net income of $535 for May. Overall expenses are under budget at 59.6%. Our metro, uh, quarterly metro jail payment will come out next month. Next page is the bank balances report, and the total of all Next page is the Bank Balances Report, and the total of all bank balances citywide at the end of May was $41,174,322. And the final page in your packets, the Accounts Payable and Debt Balances Report, total outstanding AP and debt balance citywide at the end of the month was $53,162,154, while the city's non-enterprise fund debt was $22,339,154.
Thank you, Mr. Oakley, for your report. Do any councillors have any questions or comments for Mr. Oakley? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have the opportunity to create a consent agenda. Items that could fall upon our consent agenda for this evening are the following. Resolution Number One, to authorize the mayor to have overgrown grass and weeds at 203 Azelia Drive, 1270 Cooper Avenue, 105 Thames Drive abated, and charge any incurred expenses for the abatement process pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Two, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1644 Dodgers Drive a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Three, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1648 Dodgers Drive a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Four, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 1385 Twins Place a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Five, to authorize the city attorney to file a release of garbage and rubbish lien on 145 Chester Street. Resolution Number Six, to declare the stagnant water at 709 Summer Lane a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Seven, to set a public hearing to declare the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at 1644 Dodgers Drive, 781 Redmond Lane, and 428 Upper Kingston Road to be unsafe and a public nuisance and order their abatement pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Eight, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 428 Upper Kingston Road a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Nine, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 301 North Memorial Drive a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Ten, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 432 Bedford Terrace a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Eleven, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 108 Grayland Drive a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Resolution Number Twelve, to declare the dilapidated structure at 113 Isum Street to be unsafe and a public nuisance. Resolution Number Thirteen, to declare the garbage and rubbish at 781 Redmond Lane a public nuisance and authorize the mayor to abate and charge any incurred expenses pursuant to Chapter 46, City of Prattville Code of Ordinances. Do I hear a motion to create such a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of creating this consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is now properly before us. Do I hear a motion to adopt this consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the consent agenda is adopted, which allows us to move into our regular agenda for the evening, beginning with Resolution Number One, to grant a Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Package License for Alabama Enterprise One LLC doing spirits as Z Spirits. Councillor Whaley, will you introduce the resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas Alabama Enterprises One LLC doing business as Z Spirits has applied for a Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Package License for a business located at 2012 Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama 36066, which will be a package store. And whereas, a public hearing was set by Resolution Book 2025A, page 133, on May 20th, 2025, and held June 17th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. And at such time and place, all persons who desire had an opportunity to be heard in favor or in opposition of such resolution. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of a Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Package License to Alabama Enterprise One LLC doing business as Z Spirits located at 2012 Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama 30, 36066. Madam President, I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number One? Councillor Whaley?
Based on conversations with council for the applicant, they have requested that we postpone any kind of decision on this. We talked about October, and I believe the first council meeting in October is October the 7th, so I would move that we postpone any action on this to October the 7th.
We have a motion to postpone through October the 7th. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding the motion to hold? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to hold, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And this resolution will hold until October the 7th. Item Number Two is an ordinance to grant a non-exclusive franchise agreement to Fiber Utility Network Incorporated doing business as Alabama Fiber Network for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a fiber optic infrastructure network within the public rights of way within the city limits of Prattville. Councillor Stritchitt, will you introduce this title, I'm sorry, this ordinance by title only for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. To grant a non-exclusive franchise agreement to Fiber Utility Network Incorporated DBA Alabama Fiber Network for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a fiber optic infrastructure network within the public rights of way within the City of Prattville. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for us to vote on this ordinance tonight, we must suspend the rules. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote for us to suspend the rules, please? Did we not get a second?
It was Russ.
Russ was the second.
To suspend the rules.
Oh, to suspend the rules, I'm sorry. In order to suspend the rules this evening, we must get a motion and a second, and then a roll call vote. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by raising your right hand.
Roll call.
I am so out of sorts tonight, I'm sorry. We need a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Sanders?
Yay.
Councillor Jackson?
Yay.
Councillor Merrick?
Yay.
Councillor Whaley?
Yay.
Councillor Stritchitt?
Councillor B.
The rules are now suspended, and ordinance two is properly before us. Is there any discussion on ordinance number two? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor of ordinance number two, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number two is adopted. Ordinance number three is to declare a temporary moratorium on mini warehouses and self-storage facilities. Councillor Sanders, will you introduce this ordinance by title only as well?
Yes, ma'am. To declare a temporary moratorium on mini warehouses and self-storage facilities.
Could I get it?
So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for us to vote on this ordinance tonight, we must also suspend the rules. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call? Wait, we, we have to have another motion and another second, I'm sorry. You'd think I would learn after one. We need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Now, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councillor Sanders?
Yay.
Councillor Jackson?
Yay.
Councillor Merrick?
Yay.
Councillor Whaley?
Councillor Stritchitt?
Councillor B.
And the rules are now suspended, and ordinance number three is properly before us. Do we have any discussion on ordinance number three? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number three, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And ordinance number three is adopted. Item Number Four is also an ordinance. Let's see if I can get it in the right order this time. It is to surplus real property located in the West Industrial Park. Councillor Stritchitt, will you read this ordinance in its entirety for us, please?
You sure?
It's pretty sure you can handle it.
All right. Whereas pursuant to the authority granted by Section 11-47-20 Code of Alabama 1975 as amended, the City Council is authorized to direct the disposal of any real property not needed for public or municipal services. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has identified a parcel of real property described in parcel number 1904204002003.001, and more specifically described as BEGS Core Lot 2, Block B, Prattville West Industrial Park, which no longer is needed for public or municipal services. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville that is hereby established that parcel number 190420400203-001 is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. Be it further ordained by the City Council, the property shall be conveyed to Bebo Trading LLC Sanjay D Patel upon receipt of $102,900 for said land by deed and said convenience, conveyance shall be for the purpose of establishing a new manufacturing business with a value of more than 200, excuse me, $2 million, with the expected employment of approximately 10 employees. Be it further ordained that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this ordinance, so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for us to vote on this ordinance tonight, we must also suspend the rules. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, will you conduct a roll call vote for us this evening?
Councillor Sanders?
Yay.
Councillor Jackson?
Yay.
Councillor Merrick?
Yay.
Councillor Whaley?
Yeah.
Councillor Stritchitt?
Councillor B.
The rules are now suspended, and this ordinance is properly before us. Is there any discussion regarding ordinance number four? Hearing none. All in favor of ordinance number four, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And the ordinance is adopted. Item Number Five, to award RFP number 025007 and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for professional engineering services related to the application, preparation, and development for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG funds. Councillor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes. Whereas the City of Prattville is applying to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for CDBG funds made available through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, requiring professional engineering services for engineering design and construction inspections if funded. And whereas in Resolution Book 2025, page 113, on May 6, 2025, the City Council of the City of Prattville authorized the Engineering Department to solicit requests for proposals for said services in accordance with applicable procurement laws and regulations. And whereas three sealed proposals were received by the prescribed deadline of May 30, 2025, and whereas the City of Prattville Streets, Lights, and Drainage Committee, along with the City Engineer, met on June 4, 2025, in a public meeting and reviewed and evaluated said RFPs. And whereas a recommendation that Civil Southeast LLC be chosen for said professional services for engineering, design, and construction inspection was submitted. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby, hereby awards RFP number 025007 to Civil Southeast LLC in amount to be determined by the ADECA Administration Fee Scale and be paid for with 100% grant funds. Be it further resolved that the City Council authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil Southeast LLC for engineering, design, and construction inspections for said grant. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Five? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Five, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Five is adopted. Item Number Six is also a resolution to approve a tax abatement application and authorize the mayor to enter into a tax abatement agreement in support of Project Mountain, an expansion project to be located within the City of Prattville. Councillor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville works to retain industrial economic development in the City of Prattville. And whereas Project Mountain, Old World Industries LLC has submitted an application to the city by granting authority for abatement of taxes to request from the city in Otter County and an abatement of all construction-related transaction taxes, except those local construction-related transaction taxes levied for educational purposes or capital improvements for education, and an abatement of all state and local and noneducational adverbal taxes for a period of 10 years. Whereas the City Council desires to support the expansion of Project Mountain in Prattville, Otter County, Alabama, to add an additional 24 jobs of economic benefits to the community and plan approximately, approximately 26 million, 26 million 300,000 expansion for additional product development and delivery. And whereas the City Council has considered to project, to request a, of Project Mountain and the abatement application, has found the information sufficient to permit the city to make cost-benefit analysis in respect to Project Mountain and the economic benefits of the community. Whereas the City of County, City Council wishes to approve the abatement application and authorize the mayor to enter a tax abatement agreement with Project Mountain to grant an abatement for all construction-related transaction taxes, except those local construction-related transaction taxes levied for educational purposes and capital improvements for education, and abatement of all state and local noneducational adverbal taxes for a period of 10 years for Project Mountain contingent upon Project Mountain meeting the certain employment thresholds. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council that the abatement application is hereby approved and said tax abatements described in this resolution are hereby authorized. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the provisions of said incentives to the extent and permitted by applicable law, including without limitation, the tax abatement agreement, and to take all such further actions shall be necessary to carry out the purpose of intent of this resolution for all and the behalf of the City of Prattville. So moved, Madam President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding Resolution Number Six? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Six, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Six is adopted. Resolution Number Seven is to authorize the release of funds for the purchase of one multipurpose vehicle through state contract from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated for the Police Department at a cost not to exceed $52,175. Councillor Whaley, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas a need has been identified to purchase one multipurpose vehicle for the Police Department, and whereas said vehicle is available through state contract from Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $52,175, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed $52,175 for the purchase of said vehicle are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Stivers Ford Lincoln Incorporated, and said funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2025 Budget Line Item Police Federal Drug Proceeds. Madam President, I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Seven? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution Number Seven, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. And Resolution Number Seven is adopted. Resolution Number Eight is to award RFP number 025-008 and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Grant Management LLC for professional administrative services related to the application, preparation, and development for Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds. Councillor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Whereas the City of Prattville is applying to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for CDBG funds made available through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, requiring professional administrative services for grant administration if funded. And whereas in Resolution Book 2025, page 113, on May 6, 2025, the City Council of the City of Prattville authorized the Engineering Department to solicit requests for proposals for said services in accordance with applicable procurement laws, rules, and regulations. And whereas two sealed proposals were received by the prescribed deadline of May 30, 2025, and whereas the City of Prattville Streets, Lights, and Drainage Committee, along with the City Engineer, met on June 4, 2025, in a public meeting and reviewed and evaluated said RFPs. And whereas a recommendation that Grant Management LLC be chosen for said professional services for grant administration was submitted, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards RFP number 025008 to Grant Management LLC in an amount to be determined by the ADECA Administration Fee Scale and paid for with 100% grant funds. Be it further resolved that the City Council authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Grant Management, Management LLC for said professional administrative services for grant administration. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to carry necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding resolution number eight? Hearing none. All in favor of resolution number eight, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign? And resolution number eight is adopted. This concludes all of the items on our formal agenda tonight. At this time, we will welcome the public to comment from persons present. We will have anyone who wishes to speak, please line up against this end of the cubicle or wall here. If you would sign your name and address for the city clerk, come forward and you will have up to three minutes to address the council on any issue. Yes ma'am, please come forward. If you will begin by stating your name and address for the city clerk, please.
My name is Alyssa Brown and my address is 270 Club View Drive. I am the first time attending one of these and so I may not be fully aware of like past things that have been said, but you did bring up a good point, how you went to DC to communicate to our two state senators in our House of Representatives to approve a road construction funding project. I was wondering if you've done the same advocacy for our education program to get the funding we need to also put towards that.
Mr. Mayor, I believe she's addressing you. Would you care to respond? I'm assuming that's who you are addressing as you are looking at him.
I have not been to DC, but I've been right around the corner with, in Lyman Woodfin's office and we've been working very well and I'd like to see, glad to mention and don't mind just a moment, Kim Crockett, one of our Board of Ed members, glad that she's here. But I've been, I think, a proponent for education for many years.
Okay, but you haven't talked to our senators about that? Like you openly said that you discussed that with the senators. You openly discussed the construction funding, right, with them? And that got that approved?
Well, actually, when we did go, we did deliver a packet and education was a part of that packet.
Okay, and they approved that?
I'm sorry, they approved that?
Did they?
The only thing they approved out of the packet is that's been in the, proposed in the budget has been the road project that I've talked about.
Okay. And I'm also getting the impression from this council that they're not really holding themselves to their words on how they feel about education because I hear a lot of y'all talking about how you find it's so important that our education is like funded, but I don't really see a lot of action coming from anyone with like any resolutions being passed or I just, I feel like we're introducing a lot of capital funds, but we're not allocating enough to our education, like our teachers, pensions, anything like that. I feel like we're just talking a lot about it, but nothing's really getting resolved.
If I might, thank you. Well, actually, and help me out, Mr. Lyman and Board of Ed member, two years ago, we gave 1.6 million at basically one-time, one-time funding and then since then we do give 50 to 70, maybe $90,000 a month and we do do a lot of other in-kind services. Now, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, the buildings are super important, but the buildings aren't any good without the teachers. But again, too, you have to keep in mind, in my opinion, is that this is a county school system and so we actually help the educate Board of Ed out a lot more than, than a lot of folks sometimes realize and whether it's with the Friday Night Lights or so many other items as well. But since the last few years, the City of Prattville has helped fund a lot more to the Board of Ed than I think, in my opinion, than ever before.
It seems like a lot of, like, isn't it 18 million is going towards that new stadium?
Yes ma'am, but that's also a part, a portion of that is actually funded by the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed had actually helped pay for some of that.
But 18 million is going towards that. That's, that's the bottom line.
Actually, if you really look at everything that we have done since, I guess since I've been here on 04.
It's just a yes or no question?
It's actually a lot more than that.
Okay, I'll, you can have your time back.
If I could address your pension situation, you mentioned pension. Our county school teachers are state employees and they're in a state retirement system, so the city wouldn't have anything.
I work for RSA.
Oh, excellent. So you understand how that works now. All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Mrs. Robinson?
Good evening. My name is Barbara Robinson. I live at 123 White Oak Court, Prattville, Alabama. I'm not here to complain tonight. I just want to say thank you all for the support and high city councils came dressed to impress. They really showed out, the ones that came and the mayor. And I'm just, I'm just grateful and the ones that missed it, they missed a dynamic speaker. Ms. Latricia says she has never been a speaker before. She's been to a lot of events, but never a speaker. Well, y'all missed a treat. Hats off to her. If y'all want something exciting, you have a program, make sure, call Ms. Latricia. And I'm looking forward to seeing everyone for our Juneteenth celebration. I'm still excited. I just want to say thank you to everyone. And I also want to know, I forgot when they said our budget letter is supposed to be in. I need to know that so I can get it straight.
Mr. Mayor, you have the floor?
Thank you. This month. And I believe Daniel Oakley will be reaching out to you and some others as well, so, but.
Is this month?
This month. Yes ma'am. Month of June.
Y'all pushing me. Okay. But anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Yes ma'am, please come forward, state your name and address for the council. You will have three minutes to address this.
Yes, my name is Jessica Hayes and I am at 1954 Chancellor Ridge Road. I am here tonight as a parent with my son sitting right beside me or right behind me. And so he is here tonight because first I wanted him to learn, whether it kills us all, to do how civics works and how, you know, you work and you advocate at your local level. And, but also because his future is shaped by what happens by you all today and tonight. For a long time, every vote you cast, every decision you make rippled out into the lives of my child and other children. And for a long time, many of us have been quietly concerned. We're concerned with what is going on here in Prattville. We are concerned when we see that some leaders proudly showcasing their close ties with Ivy Charter School while our public schools, the ones serving nearly every child in the city, are left to fight for attention and resources. We're concerned when decisions seem to be made behind closed doors over and over and over again. Then I learned about what happened during last year's redistricting and suddenly what was a quiet concern turned into a real alarm. That a political opponent was drawn out of his district, I cannot help but be confirmed of now. There is plenty of evidence that that has happened. Shifting an opponent into a new district just in time for an election, we can't ignore this anymore. But now we also have a new element to concern, of concern to look at. We have to consider what Superintendent Woodfin has proposed tonight. And here's the truth. Parents like me, we're no longer sitting quietly at home anymore. The times are changing. Prattville is going to change. People are talking, people are building community, and there's still one week left of qualifying for candidates.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Mr. White?
Reverend Earl White II, 621 West Fourth Street. We talked a lot about economics tonight, but the thing we don't talk about is the elephant in the room, which I did talk at the county. It's lawsuits coming because of that county jail. And you know, that county jail equal lawsuits and going equal future taxes because you don't have, you don't have, you're not going to have the money to pay for them lawsuits that's coming. And then guess what? The tax pay is going to be, be made to pay up and make up for them, for the, for them lawsuits that's coming. Like I told them, it equates to poor leadership, inability to manage our taxes because we're going to end up paying for that. I can say the one positive thing and I appreciate you all moving forward on North Island Park, but we talk about mismanagement of, of our taxes. I said it before up here, the overpayment of salaries compared to tax condition standards. You know, you look at the task for this, for this size city and what you paying them and then also giving a thousand dollar a month stipend for a vehicle, but, but, but the mayor has a government vehicle. Where do they do that at? No plan for infrastructure to match increased population. What do I mean by that? I'd seen nowhere y'all saying anything about mental facilities. Nothing about bigging a bigger hospital with new upgrades to match this, 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 this increasing technological advancement we have. I seen nothing about homeless assistance. What I do know is that our law enforcement officers take them over across, on 31, across the bridge over into Montgomery County. And how do I know that? Because I go help feed the homeless in Montgomery. And guess what they tell me? I'm from Prattville, but I was escorted and dropped off across the bridge. Nothing for low-income houses. And then you ask about military families. I can tell you I dare have read, because I am a veteran, and I have read where military families decide not to come here and go to other places, the senior, the senior leadership schools, which I have, I was able to go to CGSC in the military, they choose to go to other places because of our education. And I have said that numerous of times. And then we got to let diversity because guess what? You, you, you use bureaucracy to shelter out certain groups, but then I see the patrons' front being able to march along and use devices, signs right here in the city of Prattville and go uncontested. So I just ask, let us work together to do better, to be the preferred community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Newman?
Hi, I just want to take a quick three minutes, real quick. I want to come up here and talk to you. I know Ms. Boone, lots of times you make the comment that this is for an informative session for the council to let them know of things that the community is thinking about. And I want to take that opportunity now to talk to you guys about a few things. I want to come to you not being mean or not being unfriendly or not being out of malice, no intent for that. I'm coming to you tonight as a friend, coming to you tonight as a fellow citizen, coming to you tonight as a veteran. I do want to make sure that this is impressed upon you guys as hard as much as possible. Education is a number one priority in this community. The way that we've done things in the past with our county school system has worked for a long time. It may continue to keep working. We may have to change the mode, the modality. Something's got, the only constant in the world is change and you guys have been elected and or appointed to be the leaders of the community and there unfortunately, the past is catching up with us. 60% of the county schoolchildren are in the city limits of Prattville. The county is made up of 60% of City of Prattville. So we are the majority of that county Board of Education. So as we move forward, going forward, if we don't address this imbalance that we have between the Emerald County and Otto County, the tax base, the, the lack of property tax increase, if we don't do anything, the only, the option of doing nothing is only going to make it worse. Something has to change and I can't see behind the curtain with the, with the budget as much as you guys do. I don't know what your intent is for spending for the next few years. But I believe Mr. Woodfin, probably the best superintendent this county's had in quite a while, has been up here and in front of the county commission and several times from school board meetings I've been in where he's, he's made it clear that something has to change. They're making changes, they're trying to address it. To read between the lines of what he was talking about tonight, he needs help from the city. Things have to change. You guys have to make those decisions. That's what you're up here for. So I would just ask as a friend and I'm going to tell you as a veteran as well, that Air Force Base, word is out a little bit that our public education system is down. I don't like saying that to you. I'm a product of that. I graduated from that high school. I'm proud of that high school. I'm proud of that, of that education. Graduated in the bottom of the class, don't, don't get me wrong, but I'm proud of at least getting the, getting the diploma. Mr. Stritchitt was higher than I was. He was, he was much higher than I was, but, but I love my hometown. I love my city. I love that school system. And if we don't, if we don't address it, we're going to have problems that are going to reverberate throughout the community and impact us in a way. And if I, if I can just remind you, Craig Air Force Base, it doesn't take that federal government very long to decide that it can reallocate buildings in another place and it can reallocate modalities of instruction online and we won't have that Air Force Base in here anymore. So I just wanted, I just wanted on my heart, it was on my heart tonight to come up here and say that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Now we will move into our closing comments. Mr. Mayor?
Yes ma'am, thank you. And again, I was glad to see our education leaders here. I see some principals, I see our superintendent, the Board of Ed, and, and so many other folks. So it is good because I know we have been to some of their meetings and glad to see them here as well because we are in this as a, as a partnership. And again, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, Juneteenth is Thursday, but there's going to be a parade on Saturday. I plan on being in it with the, with Chief Thompson as well. The city's budget process is currently underway, as mentioned a little bit by Mrs. Barbara and, but if council members have any questions or need information, please feel free to contact me, Daniel Oakley, or the department head as well. The department heads, as we get further along in the budgeting process, will be reaching out to schedule committee meetings and to work for everybody. So look forward to that process. But any thoughts, ideas, concerns, but we do have a lot of challenges in front of us and we have made a lot of accomplishments over the last several years and look forward to, to continuing that through this budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sanders?
Coach Woodfin, Mr. Lyman, sorry. I appreciate your passion. I've seen your passion and your fight when you were coaching when I was on the opposing team. Thank you to your As Robert pointed out, I'm not a product of the Otto County education system, but I do understand the importance of education and what it will bring to the future of Prattville. So look forward to working with y'all and trying to solve this issue.
Counselor Jackson?
Yes ma'am. I just appreciate you again, Superintendent Woodfin, for your efforts and what you've done to this point. I think we need to, as a council, we need to make this a priority regardless of what the other entities decide. I know I've heard Mr. Mayor say often, sometimes we have to do the heavy lifting and I think this is an opportunity where we're just going to have to do the heavy lifting and bite the bullet and say regardless of what the other entities decide, we need to make this a priority because the future of our community is dependent upon this and we have an opportunity to set the tone. And Woodfin, Mr. Woodfin, he's a football coach. I've coached football, you know, and that opening kickoff, he talked about the kickoff team, we call them the tone setters. And I think it's time that we decide that we need to be the tone setters for not just central Alabama, but for the state of Alabama. And we have an opportunity to do something that no other city in the state of Alabama has, a high school on the campus of a two-year college. That's the opportunity of a lifetime. Like I said, I quoted Eminem in my post, "Look, if you had one shot or one opportunity to seize everything you ever wanted in one moment, would you capture it or just let it slip?" And I don't want to be a part of anyone that let this opportunity slip when we have the opportunity right here before. So thank you. If you guys want to come out for Juneteenth on Thursday, we will be up at Matt Gray Park. Like I said, hopefully the liquid sunshine will hold off for a few hours so we can enjoy. Like I said, hopefully the liquid sunshine will hold off for a few hours so we can enjoy. We'll have food trucks available, and we'll have a good time. Thank y'all.
Counselor Merrick?
Again, thank you, Ms. Woodfin, for being here tonight. Appreciate everybody that has spoke tonight, that continues to come to our meetings. This is a community that I love very dearly, and your voice is heard, and thank you for being here. Marcus, I wish you all success on, on the Juneteenth event. Please say a little prayer. I will not be able to attend. I'll be taking my mom up to Pennsylvania, we'll be having a little bit of a family reunion, so say a prayer for me. That's going to be about a fourteen-hour drive with just me and my mother. So, she never, she's never driven, but she tells me what I'm doing wrong. So, but, but, but thank you, and thanks again, and I appreciate, again, with everything that you, you've done for our community.
Counselor Whaley?
Well, I don't want to echo what everybody's already said, but I, but I will. Thank you to the Board of Education for the work that you do to ensure that our children are educated. We, of course, have some, some very difficult conversations that we're going to have to have, and, you know, it's, it's what we're here for. If not, then we don't need to qualify for this next election if we're not willing to have those conversations. So I, I appreciate the, the gravity of the situation and you presenting it the way you did, and just, just, it, it really weighs heavy on me as I think about what, what our education system really means to us. And I like the military aspect of the proposal. I believe that that might open some opportunities for some additional federal dollars if, but, but you got to get there first. If you don't get there, then those dollars are, are not available. So I appreciate you being here, appreciate everything that our city forces do. Enjoy your day off Thursday. My garbage day is today, so y'all load it up for him Friday, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you, have a good.
Counselor Stritchett?
Yeah, Lyman, thank you for coming tonight. Well done. I see some principals, Katie in the back, back there, and a few others. Our athletic director, Blake Boren's here, he's doing a great job moving and shaking some things up around the high school and for athletics in general inside the city limits for our schools. Thank you, Blake, for everything you're doing, so, and Mr. White, thank you for your work with the homeless. It's very important work, and thank you for everything that you're doing with that. And, yep, education's foremost and in the front of, of the future of this community, and trust me, those tough conversations, I have them about three or four times a week in my house, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you, Counselor Stritchett. To the Board of Education, yes, this is a heavy, heavy topic, and it's on all of our minds, and actually, it's on all of our tongues. It's, the discussion's been ongoing, the discussion will continue to be ongoing. You are definitely at the top of our list, you are priority. We are definitely looking and working, and will continue to, and, and that is our pledge to you, is that we are going to do what we can, and we are, are very recognizing that we are hand in hand, because what Prattville looks like in four years, what Prattville looks like in eight years, what Prattville looks like in twelve years, it's all dependent on, on our education system. Thank you for what you've done so far with what you have, and we hope to come alongside and, and see what we can do for the future. If you truly want to know why I was distracted and missing all those ordinances, my phone kept lighting up, and I glanced up for just a second with my son saying, "Mom, how do you thaw out the fish in the freezer? Is the microwave okay?" Deep sea fishing trip, and he's proud of his catch, but I am afraid of what's happening in my kitchen while I'm trying to decide whether I need to get a second or whether I need to get a roll call vote, so I'm sorry, I was distracted tonight. Truly, I'm going home tonight to I don't know what in my kitchen. I think I will eat out before I go home and do dishes tomorrow. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday night, July the first, twenty twenty-five, at six PM right here. We are getting closer to moving to our old chambers. We'll be back there soon, but for next time, let's count on meeting here, okay? So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, we have several. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Opposed, nays, we're adjourned.